Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Clerk, would you please take roll call?
Dave Abdallah is absent. Bill Bazey.
Here.
Robert Constant.
Here.
Lisa Hicks Clayton.
Here.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell.
Here.
Ray Muscat.
Here.
Tom Lenzel.
Here.
Madam Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you. I'd like to lead the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Okay, first, we have is the Agenda Approval.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Constant.
I move that the revised Agenda of the July 10, 2018 City Council Meeting be approved.
Support.
Support by Councilman Muscat. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next on the Agenda is the Approval of the Minutes. Minutes from the regular meeting of June 26, 2018.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to approve the minutes for June 26, 2018, regular meeting, Dearborn Heights City Council, as submitted.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Constant. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it.
Madam Chair. Point of clarification. Is the Agenda as it stands printed? Or is there any?
It's printed. The revised Agenda we received is printed.
It was revised with this on 9D.
Okay, nothing else.
With the addition of 9D.
Is there any? Am I missing something there?
Yeah, just so we're clear on which Agenda.
All right. Next item on the Agenda is Fund Transfers and Current Claims.
Madam Chair, back to item five. Public comments on Agenda items?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We do have public hearings and comment on Agenda items.
Is there any other items added to this Agenda?
You've got to have the people speak on Agenda items.
9D.
9D is the C E D D. You purchase.
So there is a, that is correct. So you, the Agenda was changed, the item was removed, but there was a second item which is attached, 9D was added. So that is correct. Madam Chair.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
What, that's the purchase the homes?
That's the purchase the, um...
Cap homes.
The cap homes from Wayne County. We're given the Treasurer permission to purchase them all. Any other public comments on Agenda items?
Supervisor is able to bring up or the information or request for, by the Council.
Okay, is it on an Agenda item? Because we do have public comments at the end that you could speak then if it's not in regards to something that's on the actual Agenda right now. Okay. Any other discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Regarding 8A, and that's the contract with the Supervisors Union, as part of that, when there is changes in the pension, you know, there's a supplemental actuarial valuation report that's required to be done and given to this Council. And in the past, I've asked that, and I would ask the Council to consider to receive noting and filing that into the record because it's a state law that you have that in your possession and be aware of it prior to the, prior to the adoption of the contract. Now, I assume that you have it, but the problem is that there is no record of, in the public record of you guys having it. And that's, that's my concern.
I've given it, and I have it right here.
Right, and I, I'm not, I'm not saying that they didn't have it, I'm just saying that there's no public record of it that they have it. And so, you know, it's a state law that they're required to have, and in the past, I've asked that they receive note and file it. And I've asked this in the past because that tells you what the cost of the changes in the pension of the contract that you're approving are. And so, you know, you need to know and understand that, you know, for when you're adopting these, so, or approving them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Please come to the microphone, state your name, and limited to two minutes, please.
Good evening, Dearborn Heights. Concerning the contracts, the city has lots of liabilities which are not funded. I recommend that you review those contracts. There is lots of money for longevity, you know, paid in the future, and some compensated absences, accumulated compensated absences of almost $6 million. This is a future liability. I recommend to the City Council to look at this contract and see how you can save money for our residents, for our retirees, so we can cover what we are missing on the health care, you know, benefits. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, then next, we have Fund Transfers and Current Claims.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Constant.
I move that the Fund Transfers and Current Claims, number 1 through 31, is outlined in item 6A, be approved.
Okay.
Support.
Support by Councilman Muscat. Pardon?
I see item 6, there's no 6A. Item 6.
6, 1 through 631.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I, second.
Councilman Muscat, second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Councilman Bazey.
Okay, the first one, I know I wasn't at the last meeting, but I actually watched it for artistic. That's still a concern, one. Okay, the first, the first item is need to find out about the grievance. I know it's going on for at least three weeks. We haven't heard anything that there was a union grievance against this and from the meeting corrections from the last meeting, the union, based on my experience with the union, they have a grievance, and they want their grievance, they can get majority of the money that is being spent here. So that's the first question. If we want to answer it now, or?
Well, it deals with semi-negotiations, but it is not true that we would be liable for that amount. And if you weren't at the last meeting, I would ask HR, I think, there was somebody that was, didn't you, Elizabeth, respond that, we don't, I'm not sure there's any dealing with payment because there was refusal or, no, no employee lost wages. They were working on other items.
Okay.
Yeah, but the union, I mean, that's part of the union contracts is when they...
What union contract?
Okay, so what happens when they file a grievance? Why would they file a grievance if they're not looking for something?
Get grievances all the time from all the unions. Some, if they're legitimate and correct, I settle them on behalf of the union. When I, when they are not appropriate, sometimes they file a grievance because a union member has a complaint, but it may be, it may have no merit. You're putting too much credence on the fact that a grievance, you're always looking at it that we're wrong, and we're not wrong in this case.
No, I'm just looking at it, we're paying attorney fees for stuff. They gotta be, I mean, there's gotta be transparency to as why there is something. Obviously, there's something for attorneys to get involved with it. It's not like you're doing anything wrong, Mayor. But we, we need to make sure that if there's something, if there's an grievance made by the union, we need to address it. We need to find out before we approve anything. So we're approving basically something that we don't know what the outcome is. So that's the first one. The second, the second one is, I still like to see is we're charging other fees, I mean, these are ridiculous. We're paying $41,000 in mowing lawns, and I didn't know that our city is so, it's so sad that we're paying somebody else to mow a lawn. I can't understand that. And also, the other things we, I asked at the last meeting is we have in here your mown residents who are refusing to mow their lawn, but I haven't seen anything. How is it getting charged and how is the money coming back to the city?
It, it gets charged. It can be verified by the Treasurer, all of us. There's a, there's a procedure in place and they all get charged.
But when properties get cut, the ordinance department's issues miscellaneous invoices against those properties that were been cut. And then if they're not paid, then they get put onto their taxes on a lien on the property. And so, then, you know, we get paid for them.
Okay.
Okay.
Last question on that one, that particular one, is if we're going to start using these companies over and over for the last few years, we need to start sending them out for beds because these prices are kind of high.
Well, I understand we have three companies, right? That were approved back in 2016.
Three were approved at the last, we bid it, and this, I believe, is the last year, isn't it, for the, so we'll be going out for new bids next year.
Because I think Eager Beaver was one of them, and then there was another company besides.
Yeah, and, and Eager Beaver was not fulfilling its contractual terms, so I don't want to publicly banish them. So they were removed from doing additional work.
Okay, and the other one, I can't remember the name of the third one. I had it written down at home, and I apologize, I left it there.
Yeah, within two weeks of that third company, they were not meeting our standards by any means, and...
Okay, because I think they were originally approved in 2014, and then 2016, they were reapproved to be given more money because of the costs involved in it.
Mostly related to the debris pickup. That was starting to cost them a lot more money than it was worth for them to pick up for, so.
Okay, well, thank you.
Okay, the second one, 67 and 69, it has something to do with pension, but there's two different ones, like, two different companies, the Perrigo and Broadchapel Fire. What is, what's the difference between the two, why the two pension costs on here? You have one for $7,500, and the other one for $77,000.
67 has nothing to do with pension. That is the workers' comp.
Okay.
This has nothing to do with pension.
Okay, both of them are workers' comp.
Well, 67 is. What was the other one you said?
69, that's also workers' comp. That's what it says.
Yeah, I think I remember that.
Mike Meldigan's agency. It was Meldigan.
Yeah, these are, one is a workers' comp insurance claim, that's 69. 67 is a workers' comp issue, so if somebody gets hurt on the job, we have an obligation, that's with 67. So that would be some type of health care-related activity.
Okay, the second one, or this, the other one, is NAGO Construction. I still have an issue now. Okay, another $21,000 we're paying, we're paying for sewer cleaning for, for pipeline, and that's another one. I'd like to see another bed going out. I don't know when this particular one expires.
Well, we've asked since January or February, when you first brought this up, that we have a committee of whole meeting and talk about it. I certainly have no objections to bid it. I, if it has not been bid, I don't know the status of it. It's been the same company for a long time. But we need to have a committee of the whole meeting, and we can talk about it.
Because you got other cities, you know, they can clean their own sewers, and I can't believe that we in Dearborn Heights, we cannot clean our own sewers.
Councilwoman Lenzel.
On that subject, I don't know who can answer it. It's a budgetary question, but if this continues at $35,000 or $40,000 a month, is that budgeted in, or is it going to take resources out of another area?
No, it's budgeted in. As part of yours, and this is, well, Mr. Brooks is not here, but the city entered into an agreement with the DEQ, and, and one of the items in that requirement is that we agreed to clean all the sewers in Dearborn Heights on a rotational, regular basis. There were other things in that requirement. One were downspouts being restricted, but one of the items was the cleaning of, of the sewers on a regular basis. Whether we clean them, another company cleans them, whoever, we are obligated to fulfill that requirements of the DEQ requirement.
And it is budgeted in.
It is totally budgeted correctly.
However, I, I have been looking at for the last year, year and a half, it shows that it's going from different budgets. It's not always going out of the same budget. So that's something we probably need to look at as well.
Is it out of the DPW budget, but?
It comes out of water and sewer. If it's not coming out of water and sewer, then you ought to let us know.
Well, this one is not coming out of water sewer.
Yeah, it's coming out of water. Yeah, they're all, they come out of water. We don't, the general fund, this is too big of a charge for, the general fund can't handle this.
I'll bring it at the next meeting. I, I do have it broken down for each, each month and which budget it came out of.
Please, yeah, we'd like to see it.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I got a few questions on a few of these. Unfortunately, Dan, Mr. Brooks isn't here. On 630, the bridge repair, they, they look at the bridges, and how many bridges are we talking about for $14,740?
Quite a few, and it's, it's not the repair. This is simply an obligation every two years, I think it is. Do we have to look at all the bridges? But there's an enormous amount of bridges over the Ecorus Creek. There are some bridges that are, are also, it's cup, I think, over the Rouge. And we all get a copy of the report, which I thought all of that went to the Council.
I never received a...
Well, we'd be more than happy to.
Because I, you know, I'd like to see, I'd like to see the reports and where the bridges are.
Yep.
Because right here, it just says "bridge repair, $14,740." And I know it's the inspection program because above it is the description.
One of the things they do, if they find a bridge, and let's say it's got some cracking or something, they take a photo of it, and inside the report, it itemizes the corrective. And it uses, I don't remember if this is the one that uses a five scale, but there is, it can be in excellent or it can be in poor shape. In fact, one of the bridges in Dearborn Heights, Warren Avenue, over the, I think that's the Edward Hines in the Rouge, has been scaled down, and the county notified Mr. Zimmer that it cannot handle the weight that originally it was designed for. So that one is one of them that's going to have to get corrected. Because Warren, there are some pretty huge 18-wheelers coming down Warren Avenue. The weight limits on some of these trucks are...
Even like a fire truck.
Or a fire truck.
Those are very heavy.
So that is one that we're aware of, but we go through, but it's, it's a rather detailed report with photos of when, when there's a correction needs to be done.
Yeah, I'd like to have that because we, you know, I, I know we don't, I've never seen one, let's put it that way. The next one is 629, again, Mr. Brooks isn't here, is a street repair program. Now, I believe this is the same company that did John Daley and Haas.
Hard Rock.
And a while back ago, Mr. Brooks sent us all a letter telling us about the damaged road surface at Kingsbury and Haas. And that was supposed to be being repaired along with the repairs on John Daley. And I don't see any work being done to replace those slabs, and I'd like to know when they're going to get done. And we're still, we're paying them now another $36,000 for this job here, but I'd like to see them repair the poor cement work that was done on Haas at least. I mean, that, that costs the taxpayers a lot of money to do Haas all the way from Beach Daily to Telegraph, and it's not holding up at all, and it's only a year old. So unfortunately, he's not here to answer that question.
No, he's on vacation in Alaska right now, so I don't know when he's returning. Like, two, two, three weeks.
Better. I wish it was me instead of him, but kudos to him, so, but I will, I will, I guess I'll send him an email and ask him when it's going to happen. And then 628, the Water Main Project, I see this on and on. When will this be paid off? It's a Water Main Project.
It's ongoing. We are, we are constantly replacing water lines annually.
So how is this budgeted?
It's, it's, it's in the budget.
Through the water, water department budget, okay.
Yeah, maybe, Sean, do you know where they're working at right now on the water line replacing?
Right now, they're getting geared up to work on Warren Avenue between Telegraph and Beach Daily. They're waiting for supplies, and all the plate takes, you know, a few weeks to get ordered in.
Yep. And they, and... Sean's here for the contract, but I figured I'd call on him because he would know about those things. And, and we redid the one on Beach Daily. We had gone from Warren to Haas, and then we went Haas to Ford Road.
And Ford was completed this spring, and then walked forward more, like, for the next project, they, you know, company moves to another job. And then, once all the supply is ready, they're, they'll be starting with the Warren Avenue and Warren Avenue.
And then the last one is 624. It's a motor fuel for DPW. This has bothered me for quite some time every time I see a fuel charge, and I don't know which vehicles are getting what fuel and how much. We don't have anything in place that tells us which vehicles are being filled, do we?
Yes, yeah. We have a computer system that is card-activated. Every time they activate the pumps with a card, it records what department's using it, and there's a monthly bill sent to the company.
Yeah, but it doesn't tell us what vehicle it goes in. So there's no vehicle identification card that's got to get wiped.
We send a, a basic report per apartment.
Well, I understand that, but I've been gone, I've gone to gas pumps, like, say, at Ford Motor. I have a gas card. I waive my gas card. Then I waive the card for the vehicle, which gives the vehicle's identifi, VIN number. And it's going to say, this car was filled up yesterday, why are you putting 20 more gallons in it today?
The, the system we have is approximately 20 years old, but it does record each particular vehicle. You can get an itemized report out of the computer. It's dead room. So all you got to do is hold on and request that, and we can get that for you.
Okay, because, you know, we've had vehicles stored there for quite some time, and a lot of them were recreational vehicles, and I'm, I just don't want fuel being spent on them, taxpayer money being spent on them, and I don't have a clue on where all this fuel goes.
That's a serious allegation.
Well, they were stored there, correct?
You're suggesting...
Were they, were they stored there? Yes or no?
You're suggesting...
Were they stored there? That's a simple question.
Not answering your question.
Of course, you're not going to answer the question because you know who they belong to. And I'm sick and tired of this, running around, and that's why Mr. Zimmer's not here, because he doesn't want to answer the hard question of whose vehicles were stored in the DPW yard for free. And I'm tired of it. And I've held my breath long enough. I've held it long enough, okay? People in this city were using that DPW yard as their own personal damn backyard, and the taxpayers pay for it.
Language.
Oh, it was okay for everybody else to do it, but not good for me, right?
I have this as a resident.
You know what? Then tell, tell that guy over there what he stood up for.
Point of order, guys, guys, come on, all right.
So you're out of order too, sir. I have the floor. I, no, I'm not out of order. I have the floor, okay? I have the floor. Because I've got one more vote than you got, all right? I'm tired of the taxpayers paying for stuff that they don't need to be paying for.
Making an accusation.
I'm not accu, I'm not making an accusation. I just mentioned something.
Okay, point of order, point of order now. Let's, let's move on.
Okay, I brought up something, and I want to know. I have the right to know.
Talk to someone else, please.
I'm not, I'll talk to you if I think, if you don't like it, then you can leave. Okay? You don't like it, leave.
Okay, okay, enough.
Tired of this myself, Council Chair. I asked a question. That question was asked to a department head. That answer has never been given to this Council Chair, okay? Never been given.
Okay.
And I don't like it. I want an answer.
Okay.
And I deserve an answer. Everybody wants to run and hide, but I'm not going to run and hide on the tough questions. I don't know where all this fuel goes. We've never, ever seen a printout of what vehicles take what fuel and how much they get on a daily, weekly, or monthly basis. On anybody's car. The mayor's car, the supervisor's cars, anybody's cars. We don't know. We don't know mileage, we know nothing. And it's time, it stops. This city owes a lot of money to health care, owes a lot of money to other obligations that we don't have. And we continue to work this way? We can't continue to work this way.
Okay, well, we'll look at that.
And if it's an allegation, it's an allegation.
We'll look at that then in the future. Let's move on. Any other discussion on funds and transfers and current claims?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Lenzel.
I just want to make one thing little clear. I questioned if the sewer cleaning was in the budget, and it was, said that it wasn't a budget. It's not that I approve of spending that money, because I'm always interested in spending money wisely. I was just wondering if that money was in the budget. I'm not saying it's okay to spend that much money. I just wanted to make that clear.
Understandable, understandable. Anybody else? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Opposed by Councilman Bazey. Okay. Next item on the Agenda is reports from the mayor. We have Dearborn Heights Supervisors Association 2017-2022 contract. Hearing none, it fails.
Madam Chair.
Okay.
I move we approve the 2017-2022 Dearborn Heights Police Officers Supervisors Association contract as outlined in 8A.
Okay. Do I hear a second? Motion fails.
Sean, can you let the union president?
Sure.
I mean...
Well, I just like to see why you're not going to keep a contract. It's a year overdue, and it's not a great contract. For quite a while negotiating it, and figuring it's a fair contract.
Madam Chair. Councilwoman, okay. Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
May I make a second motion?
Sure.
I'd like to refer to, make a motion to refer to study session. I had several questions, and I did make two phone calls today to the mayor's office. I did not get a phone call back. I'm glad you're here this evening, by the way, so thank you for being here. Because one of my questions was regarding page 66, which is the signature page, one of the pages, where there weren't any signatures. So that was a flag for me, all due respect. So thank you for being here because you could answer that question while you're here. But there were several other questions that I noted that I think a study session would be well-suited. I know the mayor has already mentioned the actuary report, as well as our treasurer, John Riley, had mentioned, because a lot of those questions go around that because of Act 200 of 2017, compliance and some of the liability, the unfunded liabilities that the city is facing of $168 million. Not on your back at all. I'm just saying, that's part of this contract, and we, and I want to ask the Council, have you received that report? You know, do you have that in hand? Because some of my questions all go around that, and I think in all fairness, a study session would behoove this council body before voting, just my opinion only, sir. And I would like to make that motion, and if there's support, then we can have, and have it right away, because you're right, you've been waiting for over a year.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I hear support?
For which one?
For study session.
I meant to say supervisors, not police supervisors.
Support by Councilman Bazey. Is there any discussion?
We had this, I believe, two weeks ago, correct?
619, we met at, we came to the Council, met with all of you, gave you the actuary report, said that both the union and he's here. One of the reasons there's no signatures on this is I need authorization to sign it. And we would have, if you approve it tonight, we'll meet tomorrow and sign it.
If you approve it, we'll, we'll sign it right now.
There's nothing weird or unusual in...
We always sign after the Council approves it.
That's my study session, I thought.
All right, we'll get a, we can schedule a study session.
The thing that I have is, we had it for a couple weeks, and I, I read through it.
And then I read through it again. And there were some questions in, in my mind.
I, I wish during negotiations that we get a update on these negotiations.
And we got very few and far between updates on what's going on, what's been asked, what's been given. That would be my question. But I, I have no, no objection to their contract at all, my personally, so.
Well, I can get it on a study session within the next couple of weeks the most. We'll rush it along.
Study session, I had a couple of weeks back.
It, it affects six people. And, and we came off the general government employee. It's, it's almost, it's, it's, as we indicated in committee, it's identical except for certain changes with the supervisors. I really ask you to approve this.
Okay, um, will I move to put it on a study session?
We have a motion for a study session.
Depends on what the body feels.
We have a motion for a study session. It was seconded by Councilman Bazey. Do you wanna vote on it then?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor of moving it to a study session, say aye.
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 No.
Those opposed? Councilman Conston?
No, me.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman.
I'm sorry, guys, we'll.
All I can say is we're very disappointed.
Okay, next item on the agenda, reports from the mayor. Annapolis High School Homecoming Parade. Madam Chair. Councilman Conston?
I move we approve the homecoming parade route request as outlined in A B for Annapolis High School.
Second.
Second by.
Seconded by Councilman Wenzel, too, I'm sure my fellow.
Councilman Wenzel seconded, right? It's a school. Any discussion?
Um, no, Madam Chair. Other than it should be noted that Fire Chief Brogan, I did call him about this, as well as eight C, and he has approved the routes. Because normally, he would be on both of these. And he has approved the routes, and he's not here this evening. I don't know, does he have anybody here in his absence?
He's straight down.
He's at a conference, a fire chief conference.
Yeah, he signed it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Any further discussion?
No, Fire Chief Brogan didn't sign it. No, he's at a fire chief conference, right? Up north.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The motion is carried. Next, we have the Crosswood High School Homecoming Parade.
All right, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Move to concur with Police Chief Lee Gavin's request and grant authorization for Crosswood High School to hold their homecoming parade on Friday, October fifth, two thousand eighteen, as submitted in eight C.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bazey. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have reports from city officials. Administrative Assistant Lazlo, contract for abatement, demolish, demolition, and restoration of two three four six oh, two three four nine oh, two three five zero zero, and two three five one zero, Hanover.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question before making a motion on this?
Okay.
Okay. The question I just have is with the, the way, this originally, this is with the FEMA mitigation grant. And that originally bid out was done in two thousand sixteen. Would, would that grant allow for us to go out for rebidding, since it's been two years? And would that benefit us to do so? Because the market has changed?
Uh, this, everything we do in this program is observed. And I can't remember the lieutenant from the Michigan State Police, in Lancy. But he watches every single action that we do. So if, if it needed to be rebid, the lieutenant would order us to do it. And we have to follow it, or we don't receive the money.
Okay. All right. Okay, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
All right. So, Madam Chair, I move to approve the attached contract for the abatement and demolition of the structures and the restoration of the property at two three four six zero, two three four nine zero, two three five hundred, and two three five ten, Hanover, in the amount not to exceed fifty-five thousand, nine hundred, forty-eight dollars. An authorized payment upon successful completion is outlined in nine A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Conston. Is there any discussion?
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
What I don't understand about this, why is each home bid separately? I mean, you have one contractor to knock them down. Shouldn't that be one lump sum? I mean, to me, that may be even a cheaper way to go than doing each individual property. Because if you had multiple contractors there, they could say a house and say, well, it's gonna cost me four thousand dollars to knock down. Another one might say, well, it's only three thousand. I mean, it, it's too many, I mean, they're all grouped together, and each one is separated. It just doesn't make sense why they're not all in one big pie, say, okay, I got five houses here. It's gonna cost forty-eight thousand dollars to knock them down, no matter what, what's in them. I mean, that's, that should be a proper bid.
I asked that question in an earlier transaction, and I was told that both the FEMA rules and the Michigan State supervising those FEMA rules insisted we had to do it this way.
Well, that's good enough for me. If that's the rules, that's the rules. I mean.
Yeah, we didn't, we don't, we're not allowed to interpret them or to make. The lieutenant tells us this is what you need to do, how you need to do it.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey.
So the company that is doing the demolition, McMillan, that they, that they go inside the house, inside those homes, and do an assessment to make sure they're not gonna come back as they have previously. Oh, we have an issue, we have to increase the amount of demolition. There's asbestos, there's whatever the case might be. We don't wanna go back. We visit the same homes, and they say, oh, you know, we have to increase another fifteen, twenty thousand.
Motion was made purposely and accurately in an amount not to exceed.
Okay.
I think that was done once before.
Any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Wenzel?
And that's why we switch contractors, correct?
Councilman Wenzel?
I just want everyone to know, these houses are the ones on the creek, at Ecorse Creek, that are all being torn down, that whole block, to make it a green, green belt or whatever they call it. And I have, I do have a question. Is it, do you, Mayor, do you have any idea why one house is ten thousand, and one house is twenty thousand? Is, is it a bigger house, or?
Sometimes it's, it's been the building materials in the house. We've also allowed our fire department to practice on some of these homes, so that, some of the homes are in, in different condition than some of the other ones. And I have, Deputy Chief, have any of these been practiced on by the fire department?
We've framed them out.
Yeah, so you got different conditions. Because I went, when they were training, I think it was with the Inkster Department, because now we multi respond to fires as communities. And they cut out part of the floor to rescue somebody, practice rescuing somebody from the basement. And then I, I witnessed some practicing where they were hauling people out of the windows in one of the bedrooms. And so quite a bit of that structure was cut up. And, and I think that counts for some of the reason and the difference of price.
So you're saying that might reduce the cost of demolition with them going in there, or?
Well, I, I'll tell you, the one where the floor was cut out, I, I would have thought it would have been more difficult to do a demolition, because parts of the structure had been removed, damaged, and, but that's my guess. I, this is outside my skill. I'm not gonna suggest, I know demolition, I do not.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. The motion is carried. Next, we have Police Chief Gavin, ammunition, various products purchased.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move council approve the purchase and payment to Vance Law Enforcement for purchase and payments for ammunition of various products. The total cost is ten thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars, as outlined in nine B.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Bazey. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried. Next, we have Public Service Administrator Zimmer, Johnson Controls Service Agreement.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
For discussion purposes, I move council agree with Director Zimmer in the purchase agreement of Johnson Control as outlined in nine C.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Any discussion?
Yes, Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
This is another thing that we need to go out for bid. Johnson Controls is a very good company, it's a very well-known company. But we, we keep going with the same company over and over and over again without exploring new, new companies. We don't know if there's something out there that's better for the city at a lower cost. That's one. And number two, is this for the entire city, or is this just for one particular building? Because I don't know.
If I can, Mr. Blackburn is here, and he deals with this subject. Would you wanna try to answer some of these council questions, please?
Um, the contracts basically cover all the city buildings except for the police department.
And what I don't particularly like about this, and I've dealt with service contracts for many, many, many years, that you, you pay for the person coming in, the labor, or excuse me, you pay for the materials, but the labor cost is what, I don't understand. That's what a service contract's for. Labor charges should be waived, and you pay for material.
Johnson Controls gives us a break on the labor. That's actually cheaper than what they charge anybody else. The contract for City Hall, that is an all-inclusive contract, which includes parts when parts break down. The other contract that covers the rest of the buildings is not all-inclusive. That does not cover parts. Those are separate charges. That's why there's two different ones on there.
So why have a service contract? I mean, if you're paying for all this stuff, why have a service contract?
Because they are guaranteed, the one for the rest of the city buildings is twenty hours a week, or twenty hours a month. They come here twenty hours a month, they do preventive maintenance, they go through anything. If we have issues with units, they come, they fix the issues. Those hours are charged to them. And then if we have less breakdowns, they're able to do more preventive maintenance and be able to look at things and like that.
I just don't think that makes sense to me. And I, I've been in that business for over forty years, and it just doesn't make sense to me at all. It may work, it may be working, you know, get me wrong, but it just doesn't make sense to me.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Blackburn, a follow-up on that. Do you know when the last time is that this has been bid out? I know that the city has been with this company, Johnson Controls, for many years. Can you tell us when was the last time it's been bid out?
Um, no, I'm not the director. I don't know when the last time that was bid out. But I know back twenty years ago, they had another company in here, and they failed miserably.
Okay.
Twenty years ago.
Councilman Conston?
May I just finish the thought, only because I do agree with Councilman Muscat. Might be something to look at, because we know that the competitive bid process in, for appearance of transparency, but also might save the taxpayers some money. It might be something to look into.
Okay. Councilman Conston?
Yeah, it seems like five, six years ago, there was a lot of discussion about, particularly with Councilwoman, then Councilwoman Horvath, about Johnson Controls. And I remember Director Zimmer saying he met with them, and some of the problems were, were ironed out. That's, they're, they're the king in this field. But.
And maybe, maybe.
And to add on to that, because I remember those discussions. And one of the things that happened was Johnson Controls bought out Carrier. Am I correct? And we have all Carrier.
They bought York.
York. And, and we have York everywhere in here. So one of the things that we found out when we went to other contractors is Johnson Controls can buy York materials at a cheaper price. So when you go out to another supplier, they don't get that discount. So when we went out for quotes, and, and Mr. Zimmer went out and talked to them, the guys were pretty. We couldn't figure out why all these quotes were coming in so much higher. And the Johnson Controls said, you can't beat us, because all the product that you have in all your buildings, it's a subsidiary. So we service York. And that, that's the problem we ran into. So I'm not sure it's gonna be cheaper, but we've threatened more than once to drop Johnson Controls in an effort to get them to respond. Now, are they responding fine now?
They respond great. Uh, the maintenance tech that handles our buildings is great. If I have a problem, I call him. If he is busy, he talks me through it. Or one of my crew leaders, he'll talk, talk them through it to see if we're able to fix it. They don't charge us for that. He does it on the phone while we're right there. And if I tell him which unit it is, he knows if it's a Carrier, an Addison, a York, which one it is, because he's really familiar with them, because he's been up there.
Okay, thank you.
And then, um, if you were to change companies, the new tech would spend, have to spend a lot of time to get familiar with all the different systems we have in the city.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Councilman Muscat opposed. The motion's carried. Next, on reports from city officials, we have C E D D Director Hashem, City Action Preservation Plan, also known as CAP.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Conston?
I move that we authorize the city of Dearborn Heights to pursue the purchase of up to twenty-one homes off of the, in parcels of land off the Wayne County Treasurer Delinquent Property Tax List, that we authorize the purchase of those properties, subject to review and evaluation by the city, should the, the city decide to pass on some of the parcels and not purchase them, as outlined in nine D.
Second. Seconded by Councilman Bazey. Is there any discussion?
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
Just for clarification, um, for the people, these homes were foreclosed homes, share of sales. And they're going to be purchased by the city, and then it's going to be put out for bid, so they be rehabilitated and put back on the tax roll and be sold as homes and not rentals. Big thing, it's not rentals. I, I don't like the fact that the city is gonna be in a real estate business for a little short time, but it is only for a short period of time. And I think it'll help the neighborhoods without having rentals, if I said it correctly.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Conston?
Yeah, and just so everyone knows, the treasurer, the Wayne County Treasurer, if you don't pay your property taxes for two years, in the third year, they do a tax foreclosure or forfeiture, and the homeowner loses title of the property. We don't want these properties abandoned. And so we, we have several companies that are going to come in and rehabilitate these homes and put hopefully families in these homes and get them back on the tax rolls. And that's, this is the first step in that process.
Okay, great. Any further discussion?
Chair.
Councilman Wenzel?
I have a question, I think, for the mayor. The city's gonna purchase these homes from the county, is that correct? Okay.
That's correct, but there is a couple that are lots, so, just so it's clear. Now, most of them are homes.
Okay, now, we purchase them for X amount of dollars. Now, when we sell them to one of these companies that we're going to, to approve, is, is there a profit made by the city? Or how do you determine the price you're going to charge them?
Cannot make a profit, is my understanding of the rules.
There's an administrative fee, but that's for services that will be provided in overseeing the program. So it's not a profit. It's designed to basically cover costs.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Conston?
As I'm sure Councilman Wenzel knows, these are properties that we have the right of first refusal on, so we get the first crack at the list. People are, sometimes from out of the country are buying homes at the, at the auction via the internet. So these are.
This is the first year we're doing this, right?
No.
Correct. As a city, purchasing them, yes.
Purchasing them, no.
Yeah, it's.
This program, yes.
That's exactly it. That's exactly it, because if any lots were what we called Creek Lots, we always bought them in the past. There's a couple lot, homes that we bought that were very significant eyesores. And so we purchased those either to demo them, mostly to demo them, because it just was such a bad eyesore. So the first question is, yes, we've bought homes before, but we have not been in this program. And I think all of us were fearful that it would go to the Wayne County Land Bank and what communities have told us, that when the county operates, it almost, many of them go to rentals. And so all of us, I think, are concerned about that, as Councilman Muscat indicated. And we'd like to get them owner-operated with an ownership, a homeownership. So, yeah, I think it's, we're a file program. But this is the first of two steps. After this, you've got to make a motion and vote on it for the recommendation Mr. Hashem had for the companies to be in the program.
Okay.
In the past, we had the NSP program where the city got the properties and was fixing them up, and there was a lot of controversy regarding that.
Okay, any further discussion?
Madam Chair, I have to interrupt here for-
Sure.
-a moment. And that was my question on the agenda, which was approved as revised. At your request, I added 9D, which was C E D Director Hashem, Community Action Preservation Plan.
Right.
Now, we just made 9D, the purchase of Wayne County foreclosures.
But that was the CAP program.
It's part of the CAP.
It's part of the same program.
So you're, this was the approval, what we put on was the approval of five contractors.
I know.
So we made the purchase of 21 homes, 9D then.
If I may, both of these things are under 9D. The purchase of the homes in order to be part of the CAP program, and then the selection of the contractors in order to-
But the selection of the contractors, not now.
We're not making that selection today for the contractors.
This is why I'm confused. This is-
Because I don't have a 9D in mind.
This is what the agenda is, and this is what we published, 9D. It should have been addressed.
I thought that's what we were doing. We were going to buy the houses and then approve the contractors. I think that's what our discussion was at our city council meeting.
Thursday.
Yeah, our special meeting on Thursday.
But we were going to choose the contractors, not five that they've got written down there. Is there five written down there? Because I don't have a 9D.
We have seven or something. We put on what was put on the agenda on 612 as 9D.
See, I don't have a 9D in my package. The only 9D I have is what was handed to me before the meeting by the mayor, so.
It was emailed to you, Council Chair, and it was put on at your request, per our discussion on the phone.
Okay.
And I have the old 9D, which named the five companies, that I understand-
And we emailed, we emailed everybody the revised agenda with this.
Correct.
So we just-
And then what I guess was this-
Totally ignored the agenda.
What I'm understanding is, we were going to keep the approving of the contractors, but also purchasing the 21 homes is how I looked at everything.
The treasurer came to us, and I think rightfully so, indicated that there's a time element and we need to get the approval, because the next council meeting, it would be very tight, and we didn't want to lose the particular home. But you can't have a program unless you make a purchase of homes, so. And I think the attorney's saying that it's not improper. I think that's your first motion. And you already have a motion on the floor, it's been seconded, I'd take a vote.
So just sort of on- Well, let's discuss this further.
For the purchase.
For the purchase.
So we're removing this second part, this part that names the five companies? Are we in agreement to remove it?
No, you can't.
You have a motion on the floor, Madam Chair, so you can vote on that. That's to purchase, the city to purchase those homes. And then you can still have action on that item.
Yeah, talk about it after the first motion.
And talk about it after the first-
Okay, because I'm thinking it's all in one vote.
And to the clerk, to the clerk's point, I understand the clerk's concern, and it sounds like at least we can argue that the purchase is included in the, arguably, the, was put on the agenda as part of 9D.
That's what happened, the 290s. So you have a motion on the floor, you should-
I mean, just in terms of clarity, obviously, you need to do the second part if you're going to be doing the first part, otherwise, we're just going to have a bunch of homes that we're not going to have a program in place to deal with.
I believe the revised, the revised minutes that we, agenda that we had, unfortunately omitted the voting for the contractors, which I was led to believe this is what we are going to do tonight, was the contractors. And once we voted for the contractors, that would have encompassed purchasing the homes.
That's what I thought, too. You need both, just.
I believe, Council Chair, could Mr. Hashem have the floor real quick?
Sure, go ahead.
9D, I did not put on the agenda myself. Actually, I did request that it was put on, however, the clerk did notify me that it was put on the schedule. And the backup states that 9D was basically my recommendation for the contractors. That's what 9D is. The mayor, in fact, he added something before the meeting, based on what the treasurer said, to allow the city to purchase his houses. So it could be 9D plus, or whatever you want to call it. That is not the 9D that I received myself.
And I-
Somebody's got to be clear about this.
It would seem to me that both items can be covered under the same agenda item. I don't see it as being a big issue.
Okay, so 9D just basically has the five companies that are recommended. But where's the one that talks about the purchase, other than what was given to us? This sheet here, but there's no number on that game.
It's 9D.
Yeah, you were given a two-page sheet that-
Yes. This is 9D also.
Okay, but there's nothing on that though.
What do you mean, there's nothing on there?
There's no, there's no 9D on this one here.
So that should be 9E then.
Yep, that's what I recommend. We can do the 9D to purchase, and we can add, put a motion to add 9E.
Can we do that, Mr. Clerk?
I don't think we can.
Well, we can do 9D.
Clerk, can we do that?
The agenda's already been approved. The agenda was approved with item 9D, which is on the wall there, which all our honorable council members got. And you have discussed and you're voting on the purchase of the houses without addressing 9D. All I'm saying is a point of order. To me, whatever you're doing, I'm not a part of, but I'm just saying, for the record and the way we have to record things, we have a 9D, which I don't know what it is.
Well, 9D, there's 9D, two pages, we got.
That was for the contractors.
Yes. And this here, there's nothing on it, so my recommendation is we can vote on this here as the contract today, right now, as we went through 9D. But for the agenda, we can put a motion on the floor to add this as 9D.
Because they're both basically the same, and they're put in by two different people. Yes.
Councilor Miyake, so-
I see them as being related items. I do not see this as being at all something that requires a new item. They're both related to the same program. The fact that the mayor ended up providing the additional information doesn't strike me as being a difficulty whatsoever. The order in which the council wants to end up making the motions with regard to these things is up to the council. The council could end up saying, "Look, let's have a vote on the contractors. If we can't agree on the contractors, then we're not going to necessarily buy the property. But if we feel confident we're going to end up going along with the program, but we still have to select the contractors, let's vote on the property purchase and then move on to the item in terms of selection of contractors."
That's what we've agreed to, because actually, this is written up wrong. It was supposed to be written up where we were supposed to vote on the five different ones individually today. That's what we had agreed to in the study session. And I apologize, for some reason, this was written up wrong from what it was meant to be, but-
And Council Chair, if I may, you can still do that the way the agenda is written. You just end up having to say, "This one, do we all agree? Yes. This one, do we all agree?" Make separate motions under the same item, and you're still perfectly fine.
I would move to amend my motion to add voting on the contractors to be included, as was originally posted on the agenda, that AC Property Management LLC, Dynamic Fool Consulting LLC, Dearborn Heights Acquisitions and Development LLC, FPJ Investments LLC, and Mr. or Maki, an entity to be reformed, to be formed, I'm sorry.
Could I, Councilman, so, because we spent a lot of time, I think everybody wants to get to the same point.
Yes.
And now we've got, we're getting trapped in a procedural nightmare. You have a motion, it was seconded, vote on that motion, and then you can go to those. And then everybody's happy.
Yes.
Does that make sense?
I agree.
Then we have to reject this one and then, okay.
Yes, please.
I don't know, Councilman.
All right.
You'll have to ask everybody else.
It was seconded?
Yes, it was.
So we'd have to reject this one, then we can go back and redo it.
Reject what?
You don't have to reject it, you would vote on it.
Well, we vote on that.
It's all like tie-barring it, almost.
We've already got, we've got a motion to approve the purchase, and it was seconded, so we can go and vote on that. Then we can go ahead and look at the contractors.
Yes, exactly.
That's the easiest way to get there.
Okay.
I believe that's how I believe it had been at the beginning.
Okay, so right now-
Yeah, now, are we voting on the contractors right after we approve? Because we definitely don't want to be in the same situation as the budget. Oh, you guys screwed up, now it's approved.
Yeah, I don't, I think it needs to be clarified more, because at this point, I'm hearing that we just want to vote on, first, the purchase of the properties by Dearborn Heights to Wayne County. And then, second, we will address the companies that would be awarded these homes.
Correct.
Yes.
So is that going to be in the minutes then, Clerk?
Councilor Miyake, so it could be two separate motions?
Yes, it can be two separate motions for the same item. You can have incidental motions under the same item.
Okay, well, let's do the first motion on the purchase of the homes by Dearborn Heights from Wayne County. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Second, we have the companies that will be awarded these homes, once we purchase them from Wayne County. I'm not sure how you want to go about these. You want me to read off each individual one?
One at a time.
Council Chair, I'll just make a motion that we approve and concur with Mr. Hashem on the five that he recommended.
Well, there was a question on a couple of the other ones.
I understand, and that, but I'm just going to bring it up so we can have the discussion. And we can go with it that way. So my motion is to approve and concur with Director Hashem on the five contractors that he vetted, okay, as outlined in, I would believe, 9D.
Support.
Okay, is supported by Councilman Coniston? Any discussion? Now let's discuss.
Now, if there's any discussion, I looked at the RFPs, and these were the only five companies that really fulfilled all the line items of the RFP. If the RFP was, you know, the RFP was written, everybody had the RFP, they responded to it, and there was only five companies that fulfilled every line. That's my take on it. So we asked pertinent questions to every contractor. I think I was satisfied with the answers that I got. There were some contractors that I liked, better than others, but they didn't fulfill the RFP as required.
Madam Chair, just to echo what Councilman Muscat is saying, that's what happened. This is not a small thing. You can't approve another company that did not properly respond and followed all the requirements for the RFP. This involves a lot of money. That's then, somebody who's left out can say, "Look, we followed the rules, this company didn't, and yet they're-"
Been approved.
They've been approved. We just can't do it.
That's my concern, is if we approve someone who didn't fulfill the entire RFP requirements, what does that open us up to? I mean, RFP is the RFP, although, you know, we went through this just not long ago with a Canfield Center, you know? The RFP was what it was. We didn't allow somebody to come back up and rebid on it the day of the vote. So I think we should stick with the RFP says this time.
Yeah, but when they did the RFP, when they put it in front of us, they mentioned it was 100, over 100 homes.
Correct.
So that's, to me, I mean, that's an issue. When you go out to the bidders and you tell them there's 100 companies, and you put the rules for, I mean, 100, 100-plus homes, from what they told us, it was 100 to 150 homes.
I agree.
Okay, so that's, they did the RFP on a different notion. So I, in my opinion, I think we should go down the list and vote for each one again, because we did not give the other companies the right information.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston?
Yeah, because the time delay, so now there are fewer houses on the list, but we can't, we don't have the time to go rebid, bid out everything. I mean, we have to give the city that worked on it some credit for what they told us regarding who qualified and who didn't under the RFP. I realize there's fewer homes now, but we can keep redoing this and splitting hairs and we'll never get it done.
There's less than 100 homes. That's a big difference.
I don't know if we want to go one by one and vote on each contractor. I'm willing to do whatever it takes to get this going here. I mean, we've got a dollar waiting on a dime here, and I don't want to lose out these homes that'll end up going to the land bank and God knows what will happen to those homes then.
The land bank sells some of those homes or parcels for like $100. They just, they-
Well, let's vote then, for each one.
I think about the one, you know, it's HP Snap I'm thinking about. Did I get that right?
Yeah, that was-
Snap Investment, where they did complete it. They completed it, though, by filling it out through a Word document, but they did complete it.
They did.
And so therefore, they were disqualified because they didn't fill it out in a little box. Well, the box said that because it didn't fit in, to do it on a Word document, which is what they did. So how are they disqualified?
There's one of the RFPs that was handwritten.
I didn't see that application.
That was mentioned.
I don't understand. So that's a point of contention now, right? Because they followed the instructions, so they were disqualified.
I did see one that was handwritten. They did print up the RFP, but handwrote it, so does that disqualify them too?
Yeah.
But they did answer the question, they did.
Sure. So this-
So that's, it's a fine line right here.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston?
We could ask CDVG Director Hashem to, what his recollection of who qualified and who didn't.
Thank you, Mr. Councilor.
It's on here. It's right here.
Whether it's 100 houses or 10 houses, we have to set a standard. The standard that Mr. Miyake, Councilman, Corbett Council and myself talked about, is there has to be a standard. We don't know how many houses there are. We will never know how many houses there are until July 1st, when we receive the list from the treasurer. So when we set the standards, everybody had to adhere to those standards. Now, we put $250,000, assuming we have that many houses. A lot of people did have that money in their accounts, some others did not. They still followed the standard. As far as the application, and I'm not going to repeat what I read last time, I read the line where it says specifically, "You have to fill it out on this particular format." I remember it was page two, item whatever, Mr. Miyake probably has it with him. It's the fourth time I read the same thing. You have to follow the same RFP. The council body approved the RFP, therefore, they have to follow it. Whether they want to do the program or not, that's up to you, but you can't deviate from what you approved already. Whether it's 100 or five houses, you have my recommendation, so.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Councilman Coniston?
And all I'm saying respectfully to Councilwoman Clayton is, if you saw the application, so you're saying, "No, we should include this particular contractor, because the application was filled out properly." I don't know if you've seen the application or not, but-
I did, and it was.
It, you know-
It was just in a different format, and I can understand both sides.
Well, then, there was also an issue of this particular applicant of having the available funds on hand, if I recall.
No, they had the funds.
No, they had the funds.
They had the funds.
Yeah, Snap had it, and who was their, who was their chief or their-
He's here today.
There's a representative here.
The representative here?
That gentleman there, yeah.
Madam Chair, if I may just recommend, vote on this motion, you can always end up discussing the other contractors that you might be interested in.
Well, maybe we should take a vote if we want to include HP Snap with the rest of these.
Yes.
Or not, and then just accept the rest of them.
So we would have six contractors instead of five.
Well, you could have a motion to amend that motion.
I, Council Chair, I made the motion, so if I'd like to amend my motion to add the company-
HP Snap.
HP Snap to the list that was provided to us by Director Hashem, as outlined in 9D.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
Use this, use this, use the second.
Whoever seconded the motion would-
If they concur in it, then it doesn't require a motion. If he doesn't, then it will require a motion.
I concur.[1750.54]
Thank you, sir.
He concurs.
He concurs.
Robert concurs.
Okay, any-
Take a vote on that.
Okay, at this point.
Any discussion?
What was that, H, whatever?
Discussions?
Okay, go further. Discussions?
Okay, just to be clear, so we, after the purchase of the property, are we still in agreement from what we discussed at the study session, how are we going to start picking these homes?
Yeah.
Or is that still, are we still in agreement? Just want to make sure that nothing changed.
Yeah, how, how the homes will be picked by each contractor, one, six, whatever, however we decide.
It's going to be one, two, three, four, five.
Six, and then two, three.
One, two, three, six, three, six, three, six.
Yeah, yes, yes.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, that's fine. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, the motion carries. Okay.
Madam Chair?
Counselman-
Are we approving six companies now?
Correct.
Yeah, six companies.
Okay, next item on the agenda is Communications, Great Lakes Water Authority, Letter Regarding 2019 Wholesale Water Schedule Charges.
Madam Chair?
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
I move to receive note and file the Great Lakes Water Authority Letter Regarding the Fiscal Year 2019 Wholesale Water Schedule of Changes.
Okay.
Charges.
Support.
Supported by Counselman Conston. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is New Business, Business License Renewal for Cooper's Garage Located at 21244 Van Born.
Madam Chair?
Counselman Conston?
I move that we approve the business license renewal for Billy Cooper's Garage at 21244 Van Born Road, Dearborn Heights, Michigan. Second?
Second by Counselman Wensel. Is there any discussion?
Counsel Chair?
Counselman Muscat?
Do they also sell cars there?
They do, and they have a license.
And that, okay, that's, I just want to make sure, do they got licenses, so, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion is carried. Next, we have members of the public. We ask for comments from council members at the table.
Madam Chair?
Counselman Bazey?
Uh, this question is for the HR Director. As an HR Director in any company or city, they're supposed to make the right decision when they hire people, as we were told, I mean, from various employees that were hired by the city, or if they change positions. So, the question's to you is, we just had a change in two, two people from emergency management slash taking care of the, the video, WHD TV. So, my first question to you is, did you look at this, or what is the job description? I have actually looked at the job description and the qualification for an emergency manager. So, I'd like to hear from you, is, did you assess this with the, the latest moves, moves from Mr. Ankrup to Ms. Laslow?
I'm sorry I'm not able to answer that question. That actually is a decision that's out of my hands, that, those are both appointments of the mayor.
I made the decision, not her.
Okay, I guess the question to you, Mayor, is what is the qualification for a emerg- to me and to the 57,000 residents in this city, we're very concerned in the safety of the residents for somebody to take a position as an emergency manager, as we had before. The person that was leading that position has a master's degree and also certification in that position. For the new person that took that position, what is their qualification?
I'll just share a couple of facts with you. Number one is, we work as a team in the city amongst department heads. So when we've had disasters in the past, we've not only worked with people in Dearborn Heights, but also a person that's been very valuable to us, Mr. Jaffer, who works for the sheriff of Wayne County. And they provided a lot of support and help in the flooding instances, as a related to additional resources and additional, for the inventory for reimbursement. The person who did all the reimbursement and has been involved because of that connection with FEMA in relation to the reimbursements, which we received significant reimbursement, and also were able to get into the Hanover FEMA project, was all administered by Christina Laslow. Those are key elements. Mr. Ankrup has indicated to many of us that he was looking to retire later this year. So, I, I would have received the criticism that all that institutional knowledge was left. I will work out, and we will work out, but Mr. Ankrup has been victimized by kidney stone, and I cannot work all the details out on the, uh, smooth transition. But, um, while he had a significant background, I don't deny that, and we need to keep that institutional knowledge within the city. I'm not sure you can real easily get a replacement for him, so we'll try to make that work out. But you need to know that I, uh, was expecting that he would probably be leaving in the fall.
Do we have his resignation?
No.
On file at all? So we don't know for sure.
Well, we, we have clear indications.
Well, I mean, what's, what's the indication? Did he say that, "Hey, I'm going to retire at the end of the year, I have kidney-"
He actually has a letter that he wants to give to all of you, asking for an early retirement. I think that's a pretty strong indication.
As, when was that letter? I have not seen that letter. So, I mean, that's-
I didn't see that early retirement request. I did, no, I-
I've not, I have not seen anything with early retirement.
Why would you ask?
Yeah, where's he at?
No.
Did you draft a letter requesting early retirement?
The problem with the issue is, um, my, my interest isn't so much in retirement. Uh, my interest is in protecting my healthcare, okay? Reality is, in, in a few months, I'm going to be 65 years old, okay? You know, I'm not going to be here forever, okay, certainly. But again, because of the, all the circumstances over the past several years, I really felt a passion to help protect my, my healthcare insurance. And that is the letter that, uh, that I think we're talking about, okay?
Okay.
Um, am I going to retire by the end of the year? I, you know, I, I can't say that, you know? You hit this, you hit this age, and you, you explore. Okay, um, I don't have a specific time right now that, that I want to retire. Um, will it be the end of the year? Perhaps, I don't know. Will it be two years? Could be. Will it be five years? I don't know. You know, fortunately, I'm, I'm blessed with, with good health, so, um, so again, I can, I can go on, but, but again-
So the question is, okay, so your salary, as we voted, last time we voted on certain salaries to be increased, did you carry your salary over? Or how does that work, Mayor?
He gets paid what the position.
So you took a demotion and pay, is what we're saying.
Well, my, my, my salary would remain the same as I'm making right now.
Well, I guess you didn't have the right people filling this council chambers rooting for you, Mr. Ankrup. We're sorry about that. I guess you're in the wrong department. Sorry.
Again, just want to clarify, though, the, uh, the letter we're talking about was specifically for my, uh, my healthcare insurance.
Right, right. And that, yeah, but that was nothing to do with any kind of resignation.
Is the, the new position have a better post-retirement healthcare plan than the one you currently have?
No, I don't, I don't believe so. No. No.
I'm not clear why you're concerned about your healthcare.
Uh, the request, um, and this is a, this something that's been done in the past, uh, where an individual is allowed to purchase additional seniority time. Okay. Uh, right now, I'm at 12 and a half years.
That is wrong, Mayor. You will not fire him tomorrow.
Madam Chair?
Tell me what to do.
Madam Chair? Councilwoman Hicks.
Shame on you, say that.
All right, point of order. Madam Chair? Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
I just want to take a moment, um, if I may. Madam Chair?
Shame on you.
On behalf of the residents of our community and the city, may I?
Sure.
To say thank you, Mr. Ankrup, for your years of service, 12 and a half years in this position as our emergency management, as well as information, getting information out to the community. With your master's degree, your service, I, I commend you, sir.
Thank you, I appreciate that. You know, and, and the one thing I want to make clear right now is, okay, whether or not retirement, I, I don't know. I honestly don't know. You know, it's one of the things, yet when you hit this age, you have to start asking questions, and you have to explore, just, you know, for your own preservation. Uh, the only thing on the table right now is, again, I would like to consider, uh, I would like the, everyone to consider, the administration, the, the council, and so on and so forth. Uh, the only thing I'm interested right now in is the ability to purchase some additional time. That's it. I have no qualms with, with what's going on. Um, you know, i- if the requirement is to step into this position, I'll, I'll do it, I'll do it well. Uh, again, my, my only, my only concern right now is, again, the, uh, the, the, the ability to purchase some additional time. Other than that-
That's fair.
I'll step into the position, I, I don't have a problem with that. Uh, am I going to retire? I don't know. I, I honestly don't know at this point. But I, again, I, I have to explore that.
Yeah, well, we'll have to figure that out.
So, again, no, no malice intent toward anyone, I just, obviously, I have to look at my own, uh, my own preservation at this point.
Uh, so-
Counselman Muscat?
I hate to see you retired.
Well, you know, I, I just, it's something I, I-
Uh, you know, you're an asset to the city. No matter what position you're in, you're going to be an asset to the city, okay? Plain and simple. And I think, uh, you'll do very well in this new position. Um, I think you can carry the football 100 yards, no problem.
Yeah, and you know, I've, I've already done a few things already. We, we haven't worked out a transition plan yet.
And you will.
But, uh, we're going to be doing that, and, uh, again, I'll step in, I'll, I'll do the job, you know, I don't have a problem with that. Again, the only thing I really want to emphasize is, again, the request to, to, uh, hopefully purchase some additional seniority time, which is not, it's not an unheard of thing here in the city.
Understandable, definitely.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I need clarification from Mr. Zohair. I mentioned, I, I didn't hear the mayor, was that a threat, that he going to fire a mayor?
Can I say something?
Is, no, I think the mayor, excuse me, when we, we asked the mayor the question, did you make a threat to fire?
No.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Okay, because as you mentioned in the past, you know, when we made any, when we vote on something, make any decisions on the council, the first thing you mentioned about lawsuits. Well, this is a huge lawsuit. For somebody to come up and to voice their opinion, this is America, we're, this is democracy, we're not a dictatorship city here.
Why would I bring him in as my chief of staff in my office if I didn't like Bob Ankrup or didn't think he could take and do the job?
No, my, my concern is when, when I heard that you made a threat to fire-
The department heads are my decision, not yours.
Yeah, but when you fire somebody for, for voicing their opinion, it's all of our business, and it's the 57,000 residents' business, Mayor.
Oh, you brought your opinion up. Folks, if I could do something to perhaps help diffuse the situation, again, uh, I think you're, you're pretty clear what, what my position is. I had one request, that was it, okay? Uh, I have every intent of stepping in and working for the mayor. We've worked together well for, for many years, and I, I would like to-
I hired them.
Yeah, so, I, again, um, yeah, there's going to be some bumps in the road. It, it, I'm stepping into an, an area that I, I don't know, quite frankly, so there's going to be some bumps, but, uh, again, I, you know, I, I just hope that we can, we can continue to work that out.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My second, second question here, or, um, I'd like to have our controller, she's still here, um, at least, I'm speaking for myself.
Through the mayor's office.
Okay, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, this is, the question's for you. I'd like to see, myself, I don't know about other council members, I want to see, every month, I want to see, uh, the cash register sheet that talks about every expense by the city, every city's, uh, payment, not just the 1,500 bucks that we have to approve here. I think as a council, we need to look at all expenses paid to the city. Okay? Can, can we get that? Am I addressing the treasurer now? Okay, so treasurer, can we get that, at least me, I want to see that every month?
Unfortunately, I mean, there's a legal opinion from the council, which I think is inaccurate, that the check register comes from the treasurer's office. It's actually in the controller's office.
Right.
But the legal opinion requires me to give to the council if you ask, and I can print, have it printed off and give it to you. That's not a problem at all. Matter of fact, I think other council members have asked me for it, and I've been freely giving it. But actually, the check register is created in the controller's office, and I've always agreed, disagreed with that legal opinion that was drafted before.
Okay, thank you.
So, so I guess for me, I'd like to get that on a monthly basis before, when we-
Okay.
And about other council members, if they're-
Yeah, I think he's agreeing to that. Any further comments from council members at the table?
Counselor Chair?
Yes. Counselman Muscat?
Earlier today, I raised my voice, and I, I stand by it. I asked a question, question was never answered. And I don't care what anybody says. I'm entitled to answers. This council is entitled to answers. The citizens are entitled to answers. When I made a comment about fuel, I stand by it. I don't know who's taking all the fuel and when they're taking the fuel. That is money. This council's main objective is money. So anybody that wants to disagree with that, you go ahead and disagree. The question still stands, and I really don't care what you think, because that's our job. It's our fiduciary responsibility, because at some point in time, when the perivial crap hits the fan, it's the council that has to respond to it. Because all somebody can say is, "They approved it, they approved it." Well, guess what? The answers have to come to us. I have that responsibility. I was the one standing there and taking an oath in front of a judge and not anyone else to that responsibility, and the responsibility to the citizens. So just remember that when you shout out and tell me I'm wrong, because I'm not. I took that oath. That's it.
Okay, any other?
Yes.
Counselman, Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Thank you. Madam Chair, is anyone here from DPW, or did they leave? I see Mr. Blackburn is still on there.
He didn't approve their contract, they all left.
Oh, okay, because I know that the chairwoman has issued a letter to department heads asking them to be here, otherwise items would be removed from agendas, so that's interesting that they chose to leave, because they didn't get exactly what they wanted at the time, because council felt they needed to discuss their contract more before voting on something because of some items that they had questions on. So, my questions, and though I have submitted written requests on these items and have not received any answers, I will go ahead and ask, because I've had residents ask me, and maybe somebody else can answer them. The first thing is, Charlesworth between Ford Road and Warren, any, um, resurfacing projects planned in the next year or two?
We will be submitting to this council a highway budget, and you can see the roads that'll be included, we'll probably have that on the next agenda.
All right, very good, thank you. The second thing I had was, we has a council body, there was discussion on the posting of the no parking sign, so there would be enforcement with the ticketing with no parking on trash day. Do we know when those signs would be going up?
If I may address, Mr. Zimmer is investigating different departments and getting quotes and information, and then we will end up meeting, we should have a meeting between And then we will end up meeting, we should have a meeting between the police department, myself, and Mr. Zimmer with regard to that. So, he's gathering information.
Didn't we buy a machine?
We bought a machine.
And we bought stuff and we spent a lot of money on software and everything to make signs.
Well, I'm telling you what I was provided in terms of information.
So, we shouldn't be waiting on quotes when we bought the equipment.
Are we at least making the signs?
I might have misspoken, but basically, he is checking on signs and how this has been done in other communities and that's what he's doing.
I think it's the description on the sign and not the preparation of the actual sign.
Last thing I had, I just want to share with the council body, something from the charter, so you're aware, some of you may be aware, may not be. I recommend everyone become very aware of the charter, section 5.3. And I don't want to be disrespectful to you, Mr. Mayor, but duties of the mayor, section 5.3, if you go down to item M, it states, and I'm just going to read it, so I'm not trying to pick any bones here, but it says, meaning the mayor, "He shall," or it could be "she shall," "have such other powers and perform such other duties as may be prescribed by law this charter or as may be required of him by ordinance or by the direction of the council." So, I don't know if you're aware, but just to make you aware, that is found in the charter under section 5.3, for your information.
Council Chair, on a piggyback...
Councilman Muscat?
On a piggyback about the roads, been getting various complaints about Oakland Court, which I believe is on the list for a CSO project. And the residents, you know, the road's pretty tore up right now and they patched it up a little bit. But the court is completely damaged now because of the garbage trucks. It is a total mess. I drove by it. They were asking if maybe when they reconstruct the road there because of the CSO project, if they can make the island smaller so the trucks are able to go around and pick up the cans. People can't put their cans out in the snow and the ice, all the way out past the court to be picked up. So, I believe that's a pretty good request because a lot of communities now, when they're having cul-de-sacs, they don't even put an island in anymore. It's just all cement. So, that may be a pretty good idea to go with and that was just a piggyback on that.
It's a good suggestion.
It's got to be engineered, of course.
We'll be less grass to cut if we get all cement.
You're misreading section 5.3. I do not work for, you and I both work for all the citizens and you have to outline, there's certain things I can be directed to, there's certain things you cannot direct me to do. So, it's not a, our plots. You're misreading that.
If I'm correct.
There's an executive branch and there's a legislative branch?
Yep. You have powers and I have powers.
Madam Chair?
Councilman?
I'd like to ask the mayor if, at a real near future meeting, if he could have a representative from GFL here to answer our questions and citizens' questions, because I, there doesn't go by where I don't get some kind of question about trash pickup.
We do too. I have already indicated to the GFL people because, and you just, all I need is a date from the chair.
Thank you.
Next meeting.
When you say next meeting, what day?
24th.
24th. Yep.
I want them here on July 24th.
Yep.
Just seems like, it's only, you know, I don't have any problem with GFL in my area. It just seems like pockets, and especially on Fridays, is where you see a lot of the problems.
We objected to areas that were missed. I don't see it as just one or two general areas. We've also indicated to them that under the contract, we have a right to fine them and I will be, if we have not already done it, I've directed that fines be assessed to the company under the agreement. So, we are, I indicated to them that we're very serious. We've had some that was missed. We've had an occasion for compost that was being picked up on the next day, not on the day that was, it's supposed to be picked up on the same day. We've had instances of garbage trucks operating late in the day. And so, those were all addressed with their management. And then I told them that if they didn't correct it, I would, under the agreement, send a fine. And so, I directed because I've been going out, following some of the trucks and looking to see, and so I indicated areas that I saw and I said, "Fine them."
Yes, I know why you said...
I'll have them come in, but...
Let's do July 24th. Let's play it on.
July 24th, I will call them tomorrow.
Any other discussion from council members?
Madam Chair?
Councilman Constance?
On June 29th, former Dearborn Heights City Attorney George Borgelt passed away. He had a lot of stories, we're in the same office, about events with the city, or not events, but at council meetings and different issues. So, remember him and his family and our thoughts and prayers. And then I'd like to, I'm sure our city clerk is going to say something about getting absentee ballot requests in and the importance. We're going to be picking, probably in the primary election, a new representative to the United States House of Representatives to fill the seat formerly occupied by Congressman John Conyers. Now, that's actually taken. Primary election August is going to be a very important election, so make sure everybody has their voice heard and votes.
Okay. Thank you. Any further comments from council members? At this time, we will open it to public comments in regards to...
Announcements?
I'm sorry. Announcements for our city from our, and then we will have public comments after that.
Madam Chair, the summer tax bills were mailed out, so if any residents have not received their summer tax bills, please call the treasurer's office at 313-791-3410 and the taxes are due by August 15th. I want, there's multiples ways of paying the taxes. They can come into City Hall Monday through Thursday, 8:00 in the morning till 5:00. You could mail it with the envelope provided in the envelope. You could put the payment in the drop box, check only. Do not put cash into the drop box. And there's a drop box to the right of the City Hall front door. You can pay them at Dearborn Federal Savings Bank branches in Dearborn Heights. There's two of them, one on Warren in the north end and one on Telegraph in the south. And the last way is you could pay online using a credit card or a e-check, but there's a service fee to pay in those manners. Second thing I wanted to make the residents aware of is what they call an application of deferment for summer taxes. This gives residents who are 62 years old, who are permanently or permanently disabled or blind, and if you have a household income of $40,000 or less, that you can have the due date for your summer taxes extended till April 14th. So, if you would like to review the application for deferment or like us to mail one out, please call the treasurer's office at 313-791-3410 and that can extend the due date for your summer taxes due. Okay?
Okay. Thank you.
Hello, Council Chair and Mayor. Just want to talk about a couple of quick items at the library. First off, the summer reading program is in full swing. Over 300 kids attended our kickoff party, hundreds more visited our rock camps and Marvel parties. Come on out and join the fun, read, relax, and have a rocking summer. Just also wanted to thank the Friends of the Library for sponsoring a lot of the prizes for the summer reading program. They work very hard, diligently come in every week, sort through donations, put them out in the store, and they do a really good job for us. So, I wanted to make sure to thank them for their work on that. Next, on a grimmer note, join us Tuesday, July 17th at 7:00 PM at Carolyn Candy Library for Blood on the Mitten: Infamous Michigan Murder Cases, 1700s to Present. Best-selling crime author Tom Carr will be talking about some of the more nefarious things done in our state through its history. So, that's all for now. Thanks for your time and see you at the library.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Wenzel?
I had three grandchildren that are attending the summer reading program and they've had nothing but praise, the stuff they're bringing home, little projects, and they're having a great time. They can't wait to go back again and do it again the next day or whatever.
Well, good.
Good job.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council Chair, City Council Members. I'd like to take a moment just to thank the mayor, Mr. Mayatki, the chairwoman, and the city council members for approving the CAP program. Whichever contractors you approved, I want to wish them the best of luck. This program is for the city of Dearborn Heights. At the end of the day, it will make our streets nicer, it will make the older houses better looking, and I want to wish them all the best of luck. Thank you again for all your support.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair?
Good evening. I wanted to talk about the low-cost vaccination clinic that we did this past Sunday. But before I do that, for those of you that don't know, one of the officers that are here tonight is Officer Brock Botcher. He's recently sworn in. Brock worked for me in the ordinance department. He's the third ordinance officer that's gone on to become a police officer. Brock is also a third-generation police officer in our city. My dad worked with his grandfather and, of course, we all know his dad, Mike Botcher. So, it was good to see him here tonight, so.
Thank you.
One of the best, one of the best ordinance officers that we've had, so really good. There's some fans of his in the second row here that will tell you that. So, this past Sunday, we were able to vaccinate over 400 dogs and cats, mostly dogs, lots of big dogs this year. We learned some things next year, if we're able to do it again next year, that we're going to do differently. We're going to have a separate line. We're going to separate the big dogs and the little dogs. It got a little congested at one point. It's surprising how many of those little ones think they're big dogs. And then they find out that they're no competition, so. But I wanted to, Lynn was there. I wanted to thank several people that came out, especially, we had National Honor Society students that came. They were directing folks, once they registered, they were directing those folks around to the clinic tents where they would take their animals. Some of them weren't real fans of animals, but they learned real quickly to be comfortable with that. So, that was, that was great to have them and I appreciate them coming out. And then, of course, our own employees, we had folks, like I said, Lynn was there, Jeannie from the treasurer's office, Sue from building, Janice, Sally, and Shontae from the water department, Dana from the controller's office. Of course, my staff was there. We had lots of runners. We were chasing, chasing some dogs throughout the day, but it was a great event and I'm really excited that they continue to choose us as being a location. This is something that they never did before. MHS always did these events in the city of Detroit, places like Stople Park and Clark Park. I asked them four years ago if they would consider us as a location and I think it serves a really strong purpose. We didn't sell as many licenses that day as we had hoped to, but I think part of that is lots of our folks are already licensed and so that's a good thing. So, wanted to mention that. And then also to give you an update on Chuck. Last week, Chuck was cleared for adoption. He's as healed as he's going to be healed. He's got a little bit of a limp that he'll have permanently. His back end tries to run and catch up with his front end.
Over alignment.
Yeah. If you've ever seen those cars that you can tell have been rear-ended and they've been repaired but not correctly repaired, that's Chuck. So, he's been made available for adoption, so I just wanted to give you an update on that. All right?
Mr. Council Chair, Mr. McIntyre, I hear that you rescued some ducklings?
We did.
And thank you for...
Well, it all started with Vince Drapasi. He's the one that first called us in. So, really, he's the one that actually saved the duckling, so we should recognize him for that.
You saved, I thought somebody else was saving them.
We...
He alerted everybody.
Thank you. But the other thing, I want to thank you for your quick response on Saturday with the problem with a tree that was being cut down.
Yeah.
I appreciate the help that you put out there and investigating what's going on.
Yeah. Folks, really need to remember that it does require a permit to take a tree out of the city and you need to actually have a physical permit in your hand. It needs to not only be approved, but it needs to be paid for before it's considered a correct permit, so.
So, thanks for taking care of that.
You're welcome.
I didn't know who to call. I called the police, which obviously they got you involved.
I am going on vacation next week. My brother's coming into town. I mentioned this before, my brother lives in Florida. Tragically, his sister-in-law died in a fire three weeks ago, so they're coming up to spend a week up here in Michigan and I'm going to try to dedicate as much time to them as possible.
Have fun and family first, so.
Yeah.
But I do thank you for the...
You're welcome.
...for the help that you put out that day.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Clerk?
Yes. Madam Chair, not to inflame any situations here and not to be critical of anybody, but I just would like everybody to know why I interrupted 9D and what is happening here. The clerk's office and we have no interest in what companies get approved or what houses get bought. I'm worried about the procedure. That is why I interrupted. We have issues of trying to figure out what is being reported after the meeting. We are charged with accurately reporting what happens at these meetings. Why I interrupted is because 9D was the CAP program and we were voting on buying houses. So, it was not to cause any problems or causy, but if I don't understand what's happening at the table, I approve these minutes after our council secretary sometimes has to listen for a half hour to try to figure out what's going on. So, that, you know, the counselor brings his opinion that you could wrap these two together and it doesn't matter to me if you wrap two together, but I need to know what's going on at this table. So, that is why I interrupted and we need clarification. We can't write a motion if we don't know what the motion is. We can't write minutes. So, that was my reason for interrupting and I hope you all understand. And I hope, you know, I'm here to help every single person at this table and every single department head and we're here to cooperate with everybody, but we need a little help sometimes too here, so.
No problem.
Madam Chair, the clerk wasn't interrupting and his help was appreciated.
Oh, absolutely. Definitely appreciated.
And Councilman Constance indicated, I was going to say something about the election, so I guess I should, all right?
You don't have to.
We are actively sending out ballots every single day, receiving ballots every single day, working every day on the election, doing different functions, meeting with Wayne County and the state tomorrow. It's a month away, four weeks away, folks, so. Everything seems to be going with the absentee ballot smooth. Not too many people are complaining they haven't gotten them, but we still have some people that haven't gotten them in the mail. So, just to reiterate, 313-791-3432 if you have asked for an absentee ballot and have not received it in a reasonable time and with our mail service now, we are advised that five days is a reasonable time. So, if you haven't gotten it, give us a call. We send, every request that we get, they get sent out and I take to the mailbox personally on a daily basis. So, turnout is small. Spread the word. Every election's important, folks. We only have 22 requests for absentee ballots. We used to get well over 3,000. We've got, I think, right now, 600 returned. So, spread the word. Last thing I'll say, I asked a few weeks ago for election workers and once again, I'll just say, if you're interested, we have classes every Thursday for the next three Thursdays to teach people how to run a computer. We could still use a few more. Please consider. It's a long day. It's a trying day, but you're helping out your city and we'll put a check for 180 bucks in your pocket at the end of the day, so.
Mr. Clerk? Not that I want this job, but are we allowed as elected officials to be part of that or not?
I'm actually in a meeting tomorrow with Wayne County and the state and I'm going to answer that very question because I have had, worked in the past and then there were some questions.
And if we can volunteer our services also without pay.
Were some questions about elected officials working, so I'm going to get some clarification. And I appreciate that offer and another...
I'm usually at the polls all day anyway, so.
Another council person made that same offer and I hope the answer I get tomorrow is that I can take you up on it. And we'll hold you publicly to it because you said it. I won't hold the other council person that told me privately, but we got you.
Yeah.
Thank you, everybody. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Okay. That's, looks like it for announcements. We have public comment. State your name. I'm sorry.
One announcement. I forgot, I wasn't sure of the order.
Okay.
First of all, I want, on behalf of all of us here, I want to thank all the people that come out to these meetings, especially the ones that come out on a regular basis. Your input and your presence here means a lot to us and shows that you care. And no matter how we feel about your opinions, it's, that's your right as a citizen to state your opinion, so we really appreciate that. And the three new members that, of the council that were elected last November, we're approaching, we're working on our second half of our first year. And I want to thank all the people that voted for us and the ones that didn't have voted for us, I hope we're meeting your approval now. And we're always open. And we're always open, I'm sure I speak for everyone, for, contact us with any questions or anything you've got, any suggestions or comments. And I want to push my golf outing if I could.
Okay.
No? Okay. Never mind.
Okay. This time I'll open it to public comments. Stay, oh, you're...
I'll piggyback on what about Constant and the clerk has said. We are happy to meet and greet of the people who are running for John Conyers seat. The House of Representatives for the 13th District. It will be put on by the Southwest Dearborn Heights Neighborhood Association, and mark your calendar for July 18th, a week from tomorrow, Wednesday, 7 to 9, at Thorn School, which is located at Gully, Indianapolis. We'd like to see you there. Four of the people have already agreed to appear, and I think the fifth one will as well. So please come and see who you might consider voting for in the primary, because if they don't get through the primary, they don't get to be on the November ballot. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Did anybody confirm?
Yes, anyone from anywhere.
Okay, I will open it up to public comment, state your name, and please limit to three minutes.
My name is Dennis Dobbins, and I wanted to bring my issue to the city council, ask for your fairness and attention to the issue of a $6,000 water bill on my tax bill. And I'm not sure that that's legitimate. My meter doesn't show the same reading that the city has. I've asked for a second reading, and they said, no. Well, you know, it's, it's, it's accurate. We did this, we did that. Basically, the problem is is that I had no idea what was happening, until all of a sudden I got this $5,000 water bill. Now, it's a non, it's a non-homestead property, so in other words, I pay twice the amount of taxes that a homestead property would have. But I was not aware that they were doing auto-read estimate, estimated bills for over a year. The city didn't have any procedure to contact me, the owner, the person that's on the tax bill, that would have been, you know, jumping through hoops to go over there and open up the property and let them read the meter. Instead, they contacted the person inside that, you know, didn't pay the water bill and didn't care what was going on, if there was water being used, you know, in excess of what they say. I don't know that that's true, but again, my meter doesn't show the excess. And I have asked for clarification, I've asked for the water department to discuss this with me. I've made them an offer like this, okay, either you have no justification for your bill, or if you do, if it turns out that this is a just bill, what about a kind of, you were complicit in the whole operation of just ignoring the fact until I got the bill. Now you're saying, well, you have, you know, the right to put this on the tax bill. It's like an automatic, guaranteed payment. Who gets that kind of treatment in anywhere except the city? You can just charge this to me. I had no idea what was going on, your people weren't contacting me, and at the final end of the day, they say, oh, by the way, you owe $6,000. Now, is that fair? Because you're only paying half the price of the water. We all know that there's a wholesale price and a retail price. So some of that is profit. Maybe the city people that were doing the calculations want to make a lot of money on me.
There's no profit in it. There's...
I just heard that the wholesale price of water was being recorded by the city. I'd like, add a freedom of information on knowing what that is.
I'll tell you very clearly, the water bill consists of two parts, the cost of the water.
Yeah.
And also the sewage disposal. We are billed on the basis of sewage disposal based upon the amount of water that's purchased from Great Lakes Water Authority. So consequently, we bill the residents in the same fashion, because there's no meter on the discharge in the drain, so we don't know how much. We have people that have argued that they water their lawn and it gets evaporated.
That's me.
And there's some truth to that, but we don't have a way of measuring it. So there, we operate the water department at a loss, and we try to balance it for cash flow purposes, if you look at our financial statements. So there's two pieces to a bill, and you came in, you're a landlord, and your tenant used a whole bunch of water. The billing...
Maybe, maybe not. I don't know. My bill, my, I looked at the meter, I tore the sink apart because I couldn't read it. It was way buried underneath the sink. And on the weekend, I went in and tore the sink out, and I looked at the meter, and I took a picture of it, and it doesn't show the uses that you're claiming. But it, that's, I don't know. We haven't reached that point where I'm verifying this to be accurate. I don't know what happened. But I'm showing that a year went by with nobody contacting me, that I could have prevented this, this unreasonable usage, if that in fact is the case.
You didn't give us an address. You don't live at 5702 Pelham that you're tenant?
5702 is a rental.
Okay.
And I've heard a lot of people say that's not good, but I take good care of the property, and it's been a rental for a long time.
So the bill went to, to your tenant, correct?
The bill was sent to me and the tenant, and I, and I saw, and I didn't see anything that stood out as a problem until the $5,000 bill arrived. A year after supposedly estimated bills were sent, and I don't think I got all those, and I certainly, I didn't get anything from the treasurer's office that said it was going to go on the tax bill. Otherwise, I would have prevented that extra $1,000 penalty. I would have probably paid the 5,000, but I'm not going to pay it now. 6,000? No, no, you didn't send it to me.
This particular customer, I mean, it's a rental property. There was an adjustment to the bill. That bill was mailed out over a year ago, in June of 2017. He admittedly says he gets copies of the water bill because one goes to the home and one goes to him. So now, a year later, it's gone onto the tax bill as we regularly do, and now he's saying that we haven't given him notice. We mail him a bill, the water department mails him a bill at the same time they're mailing one to the resident. Now, if he hasn't taken action in over a year, that's the way we collect our water. We collect it by putting it on the taxes, because otherwise, every other residence in here who's paying their water bill are paying for his non-payment of the water bill. And that is not fair. And so we collect it in this manner. Now, if he wants to have this looked at of the, of the, of the reading, that's one thing. But if he's not taking action or handling his business as a rental property, he's a rental, he's his business, and he's not doing his part, and he's trying to blame it on the city, which is not fair. The city has mailed out a letter before they put it on the taxes, and we put it on the taxes regularly. That's our process for collecting non-delinquent waters, and he's been aware of it for over a year before it went onto his taxes.
And I asked for assistance with the water department to help resolve this, and they did not come out to my request to reread the meter. And I've gone to the place on Van Born and said that I got tasked at cooperation that they would help me, but still, I didn't know what the real reading was until this last weekend, and now I'm not sure that I owe anything. But if I do, I don't see that this, this, this lack of, the procedure for the water department to just allow estimated reads, estimated reads, and then come out a year later and say, oh, it's not 505, it's 1,505. It just seems like that was, doesn't seem right. And I think that allowing the people to just only try to contact the resident and not the owner who is ultimately responsible was part of the problem, that's the problem. I'd like, I'd like the city council to entertain the idea of balancing the equation. If I do have responsibility for the entire amount of reported usage, I'm willing to pay $2,500 for the whole thing and clear it. Can I get any help?
I don't think that's in the realm of our, the scope of our, we don't control any of that.
But it's funny that you don't pay. I'm willing to pay you for your water.
I, I...
But it's at the retail price.
I understand, I, well, you know, I understand what you're saying, but that's out of our scope of our jurisdiction to, to tell the treasurer to take half the bill away. I don't know all of the circumstances of he said, she said. Now, why was your bill estimated? I don't have a clue. My bills are always...
You know, in some cities, they just shut the water off if you don't pay the, and I would have preferred that. In Ecorse, you don't pay the bill, shut it off. In Detroit, shut it off. In Dearborn Heights, I said, why didn't you just shut it off? When you came out, why didn't you shut it off? Instead, it just kept going. I didn't get the bill till months after they came out and read the meter and said it was wrong.
Again, we don't, we don't, we don't, we don't control on who and who doesn't pay their water bill.
Your, your oversight to the water, to the water department though, right?
No, we don't over, no, we don't, we don't tell them who to charge and who not to charge. We just approve rates, okay, when it comes, comes due to us, okay? Like I said, I don't know why your bill was estimated. Mine is actual all the time. That should have been somebody's first clue, is why am I getting an estimated bill every month if you were getting the bills? You said you were getting some of the bills.
Oh, it's easy to not see that it's an estimated, you just look at the amount and it says, oh, I owe $40.
But I understand, but when I get my bill, I make sure it says actual reading. I want to know if they were actually out physically plugging in.
I assume if it's estimated, they're going to catch it up the next go-around. You know, that's all...
You got to know if it's estimated or not. That's why they put it on there, it's estimated or actual.
Well, if they had sent it to me at the first estimated bill and said, the round that we want to charge you is $5,000, that would have grabbed my attention.
At this time, we have a limit of three minutes, and we are at the three minutes.
That's not in our scope to, to tell, to direct the mayor or the treasurer to, to take away a bill. That's not in our scope. That's something that you have to do on your own and negotiate it yourself.
And you need to be in touch with your tenant as a landlord. If you have a problem with the water bill not being paid, it's, so you're saying we should have went and shut the tenant's water off so you wouldn't get stuck with the bill? Well, that's, that's your business arrangement between you and your tenant.
Oh, well, how would I know? How would I know that this is going to happen?
At this point...
Talk to your tenant, three minutes.
Three minutes.
You're over your three minutes. We should go on to the next. Thank you very much. Any other public comment? Come to the microphone, state your name, and you have a three-minute limit.
My name is Edward Jackson. My family's been living in this community since it was even considered to be a city. Few things I'd like to bring up, among other things, lack of people here, not making their point where opinion's known. Transparency and accountability is one of the biggest things I heard during this whole election by everybody. Now that this council is asking questions, it doesn't seem to be wanting to be answers for a lot of things that are going on. I understand the mayor has the executive branch, you guys legislate him. He can flip these jobs around. You are jeopardizing that while being in the city in case of an emergency. I ran the health department for the UAW for years. You have to have qualifications, certifications consistently to be updated. I appreciate the fact you can flip people around. I don't think you're doing it in the best interests of us at all. You pick and choose who you want. You made a disparaging comment about this gentleman's situation, that is totally wrong. I watched his counsel before the last election, snickering at people and stuff. That's nonsense. You want us to be respectful up to you folks? We demand the same things back here. When the questions come from the council about the money, what's going on, different things in the city going on, they're not asking up here trying to be a bunch of hard people. They're asking for us because we're paying for it. Again, straight answers would be nice, not dancing around, not making study sessions every time somebody wants them, or closed sessions for meetings. We deserve this. We pay for the city. Just like you said, Mr. Mayor, you're a citizen also. Take some pride and act like one.
Okay.
Okay, I'm Bob Ankrup, obviously your former boardroom manager. Folks, I really appreciate all your, your good standing support under the circumstances of what's going on right now. I don't want to be part of a controversy. I look back at the number of years I've served here, and I think I did a pretty good job. But based on everything that's been said, and I think in anticipation of everything the way things are going to go, I'll just let folks know that, and I'll follow this up with the formal paperwork tomorrow, but I, I'm intending to turn in my, my retirement as of October 1st. Thank you. I appreciate all your good support. But no, it's, I think things are irreparably damaged with this, so I'm going to do that. I wish you the very best, but I think that's the best thing for everyone at this point.
Okay, state your name, address, and limit it to three minutes, please.
Suzanne Todd, Academy Street. I hope that you'll give me an extra minute since I'm so mad right now. I'm trembling, I'm upset because the mayor has put this city in jeopardy. I have been, I have known Mr. Ankrup for over 12 years. I was in his first CERT class. This man knows his stuff inside and out. Just because the mayor wants Chrissy to get more money is, and to do what he did is, is deplorable, absolutely deplorable. And Bob, I hope you reconsider your retirement. Even though what he said about fire, about firing you, that's not going to happen without a fight from the residents. I can, I can assure you of that. This is the second time Mr. Ankrup has been screwed by the mayor. When his wife was very sick and dying, everybody else took a 10% pay cut. Mr. Ankrup took more, took about a 30% pay cut just so he could keep his medical benefits for his ill wife. Shame on you, Mayor Paletko, shame on you for doing something like that. You have no right. You're supposed to have the residents of this city in mind, not Chrissy Laslow. And one more thing I want to say, I don't think she deserves any title. This woman slandered my marriage of 45 years by a lie that she put on social media. She does not deserve the job. She doesn't even deserve the job of custodian, as far as I'm concerned. And furthermore, if something happens in this city, and an emergency isn't handled right, you, Mayor Paletko, will be held responsible, and I want that on record, for what you have done to this city, just because you want your assistant to get more money because she didn't get it. You have put this city in jeopardy. Please, Mr. Ankrup, don't retire. We need you. I was in his first CERT class. One of our training missions, since we live near Metro Airport, he said, we're going to have a training mission where a plane, I know I'm going over, please, if a non-resident can speak for 10, 15 minutes, please, just give me one more minute. He had a training mission for simulating a plane crashing into an elementary school when I was a CERT Community Emergency Response Team. I could not believe, when we walked onto the scene, we, we got there, we all audibly gasped. He had an actual smoking airplane fuselage. People were laying about somewhere, I mean, it was so realistic, so realistic, that it really felt like the real thing. And we are losing, this council has got to fight to keep Mr. Ankrup. Please, fight for him.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment? State your name, address, and please limit to three minutes.
I'm going to walk out. I'm not putting up with him.
Good evening again, Zohair Abdalha. I just want the public to see what the mayor did and why I said shame on you. He put his hand on his mouse and turned to the attorney of the city, and he said, he'll be fired tomorrow. He'll be fired tomorrow, Mr. Ankrup. And we heard him there, but it doesn't surprise me at all. And I'm not here really. I come because I enjoy coming to the city. I enjoy to talk to the people in the city. I enjoy the freedom which this country gave me, which I couldn't have in the country where I came from. I'm looking at the budget, and please follow me if you can. In the revenue section, $8,567,982 and 90 cents, Act 345. Second line contribution to Act 345... Second line contribution to Act 345, $35,000. I'm going to ask the mayor, I'm going to ask the controller, I'm going to ask our treasurer to follow me too, please. You have hospital insurance, $3,167,764 and 80 cents. Hospital, general government, $960,000. I asked the treasurer, the controller, twice yesterday, I didn't get an answer what that was for. Life insurance, $83,200. Life insurance, Act 345, and I hope you write those numbers down, $2,912. 345 pension, $3,178,634 and 90 cents. 345 insurance, $4,154,500, $500. 345 expenditure, $660,000, which I understood that it's administration fees. I added all these numbers after I looked at all the pages in the budget, and if I am mistaken or missing something, please, Mrs. Controller, correct me. They came to $7,994,046 and 90 cents. The budget has revenue of $8,567,982 and 90 cents. The difference is $573,000, $573,936. I searched all the budget to see this money which we've been charged for Act 345. I couldn't find any place in the budget anywhere it says this money was spent on Act 345. I'm putting this in your hands to check if this money was really used for Act 345, or it was put someplace to pay for something else, which is illegal to do because that is money for Act 345. And it's our obligation, all of us, the mayor and yourself, to make sure that our retiree get their health insurance, and our police and fire department get their pension, so one day they don't wake up and they don't have anything, because for the last 12 years, the mayor didn't do his job, and he hidden from you a letter from the state treasurer on May 17, which triggered an investigation on the healthcare, you know, account that he is short liability, he's $168 million. He is required to keep in it under the law, Act 200-2017, 40%, close to 67 or 68 million dollars, and he is under obligation not to use from the revenue of the city more than 12%, which is around, you know, I believe, eight and a half millions, give and take. So what we doing here, we have to have forensic audit, because I don't trust this budget which you guys approved. I don't blame you because you just came on the scene, and I really thank you for the beautiful job you're doing in the short time you are here. So please have a forensic audit on this budget.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm good.
Okay, at this time, would we like to adjourn?
I want you to adjourn.
Support by Constant, reading adjourn.